Moving on to next public hearing, item B 23-1-ZS of Towne Plainfield requesting a zoning regulation text amendment to delete section 12.21 municipal uses and add new section 15.9 municipal uses. So we have requested that some revisions be made to those regulations in order to ensure size and scope information. And I did have a clarification question, Ryan.
Sure.
So looking at accessory structures and additions to structures not ticked each, 900 square feet of footprint or two stories. So actually, that would be, if it's two stories, 1,800 square feet.
No, no. If it's, well, yes, 1,800 square feet.
Times two, so 1,800 square feet. So if that were a resident, they wouldn't be allowed 1,800 square feet without a special permit.
For accessory structures?
Because we require, we require a special permit for 900 square feet, not 900 square foot, footprint.
It's footprint.
For special permits from residents?
For accessory structure.
Yeah.
You can have a two-story accessory structure without a special permit. It's 1,800 square feet.
Does it seem bigger than that? This is a public hearing. So if there's anyone in the audience who has a comment, a question about these regulations, if you can come on up to the microphone, state your name and address and your comment.
Good evening, Kevin Cunningham, 405 Musa Park Road. I just have one item, which is just clarification. I see in the notes it talks about monuments by exceptions have been limited to the size of five by five with larger monuments requiring a special permit. Is it possible to get a further clarification on that? And the reason why I'm asking is because five by five by what?
That was my question, too. So if we're talking about a flat structure, then it'd be 25 square feet. But if it's five feet tall, five feet wide, five feet deep?
Well, the intent was five foot base either direction, five foot tall.
Would it help to clarify that? I think that might help the issue from monuments that I saw inside the zoning regulations. I think that would be helpful on doing the example of why I'm asking. If you notice the, in the lines part, there's two batches that I can put up as monuments, as two different individuals. So does that qualify as a monument? What else qualifies as a monument? I think that might be helpful to have some clarification on what monuments is, putting in definitions in front.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions regarding these regulations? Any comments or questions from board members? All right. Hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion by June to close. Second by Lindsey, all in favor of closing the public hearing.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, public hearing is closed. Moving on to item C 23-16 SP of Route 12 Bulk LLC requesting a special permit for bulk propane storage and distribution on property located at 388 Norwich Road, assessors map 16, block 56, lot 24, C1 zoning district. And we have presenting for the applicant.
Yes, good evening. For the record, my name is Craig Law, I'm a licensed land surveyor with Killian Engineering Associates, place of business at 114 West Hart Road in Danison, and I'm representing the applicant tonight. Do you have plans to spread out before you?
Thank you. And actually, I think that June and John can share, and Lindsey and I can share, and that should be good. Thanks. Thank you.
You're welcome. So again, just a brief refresher on what we were proposing with this site, with existing sites that had bulk oil storage approved over 20 years ago, a little bit over 20 years ago on this site. Our proposal is to add bulk propane to the upper portions of the property. Two points of things that were asked to be addressed were traffic and then the hours of operation. Currently, the oil operation or bulk oil operates at 24/7, 24 hours a day, seven days a week. We did look back, I know Ryan looked in the records that he could look. I also went back to my previous employer where I worked, where that was approved at 20 years ago, because I was part of that project. Back 20 years ago, this wasn't a special permit, it was just a site plan review, is what I discovered. There was no hours of operation that I could find that were either related to the commission or put on the application. And I think, Ryan, correct me if I'm wrong, you were under the same, or you found the same results?
I thought it was a special permit, but I could be wrong.
I just thought the actual application would show the site plan review.
It could be, I could be mistaken. I did look back, whether it was a site plan review or a special permit, we had the information that was, that was approved at the time.
So there was no stated hours of operation and there were no restrictions pertaining to the hours of operation?
No, it was really basic, it was a whole lot to it.
So we are still planning to do the 24/7 as it's been running there, and that will be the same for the propane. We did look at traffic, we asked the applicant to provide us his tickets for the past two months on the site. And what we discovered with existing traffic for the bulk oil is that there was a low of, or as few as seven per day, and the high was 42 per day. And of those, on the highest, eight of those were larger trucks, most of them were smaller trucks that go out and do their deliveries. We looked at the overnight in that same time period, the most there were, were three, there were some nights with none, but the most there were ever were three overnight. I believe that's what we gave last month. And during the peak traffic in the morning, which would be between 7:00 and 9:00 a.m., we're only looking at four trucks for that site. That's what's happening presently, so that's the existing stuff. For the oil, looking at the proposed propane business, which is going to be a lease operation that the applicant has going to someone, they would have a maximum, this is the propane now, they would have a maximum of four trips per day for deliveries. So that would be the smaller trucks that come in, pick up propane, take them out and deliver them. They would have up to four truck trips per day. And then there would be free deliveries to the site per week. That would be the larger truck that comes to fill the bulk storage. Obviously, when it first opens up, there will be a few bigger trucks that first time could just get the tank full, but that would only be a one-time thing. We did look, Norm Tebow is a professional engineer and my business partner at Killian Engineering. He did look at the traffic and the level of service of Route 12 in this site. He looked at the traffic data provided by the state of Connecticut. The level of service, based on only four trips going out during the peak hours, we would be adding approximately one to that, would be five trips during the peak. His report that he provided you, his summary is that they would not be increasing the level of service onto Route 12. Obviously, during peak traffic time, there is, the last traffic count since 2002 from DOT, there are 6,200 trips per day going by the site. Again, there may be a slower wait to get out during those peak times from our driveway, wouldn't impact anybody on the roads, but again, we would not be making that any worse. So there would be no change to the level of service. The other thing we heard testimony was that traffic exiting the site was crossing over and blocking the road. We did look at traffic movements and those were added to the plans on the detail sheet. There's ample room, it's almost 30-foot wide ride, at some points it's actually wider than Route 12 itself. So there's ample room for trailer trucks and the smaller vehicles that are going to make turns in both directions and to enter the site without impeding traffic. Again, we have 26-foot wide driveway towards the end, and then at the throat where it comes out to probably have 55 foot per. So it's our opinion that that can be safely handled, and that is also in Mr. Tebow's report that was presented to you. Those are the only changes that we made, we're adding those details and getting some of this information and generating this report. So I will turn to that group of commissioners to have any questions before we can answer them.
So this is a public hearing, so if there's anyone with a comment or question on this application, step up to the microphone, name, address, and comment or question.
Billy LePain, 383 Norwich Road. What he just stated is the amount of traffic, is he referring only to the oil trucks that are being delivered and?
So could you detail, you said it was a period of time that the monitoring was done, and what trucks that aspect covered? It was all vehicles coming in and out of the property that were tracked?
These are the ticketed vehicles, so those are the vehicles that are picking up or dropping off that they record.
Okay. And what period of time was that for?
The last two or eight weeks.
Okay.
That does not include tractor trailers coming to fill up their tanks, because he sells to tractor trailers diesel. That does not include campers going up there to get propane. That doesn't include anybody else that has a diesel car going up there. I live right across the street, and when you say there's only a couple vehicles, I can sit up and I can count. I actually was doing a counting, because there are more than seven vehicles a night, okay? Because you're not counting in the tractor trailers going up there to fuel up or any other vehicles, okay? Another thing is, I want to know how many trained employees on the use and safety of the equipment physically work at 383 Norwich Road?
So just for clarity, the variability of the traffic was at a low seven trucks a day, but at a high 42?
Forty-two, that's right.
And that includes all customers?
All customers are ticketed, according to the applicant.
Okay. So when counting, it's all customers were counted coming and going?
Correct.
So the lowest day was seven, and the highest day was 42?
Yeah. And there may be peaks in the winter where there's more, and then there may be less in the summer when there's less.
Sure.
But that doesn't count, that doesn't include campers, anybody filling up diesel trucks, they're all ticketed, and those are all part of these counts.
Okay. And then when it comes to what training is required of the employees, that's covered under Occupational Safety Health Hazard Association, OSHA. So that at all times, there is required to be a trained staff member on-site in order to do the work that's required, it's for filling?
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you for that clarity.
How many employees does he have? That's what I wanted to know.
So I'm not sure that that is actually a relevant question to?
It is, because...
So as long as there is a trained person on-site?
There's not, that's what I'm saying. If they only have one employee, how can he do 24 hours a day, seven days a week?
So there's different shifts to the work he needs to?
No.
Please, I'm talking to the applicant, thank you. So you operate 24/7, however, it's not a structured first, second, third shift, it's an as-needed, like emergency delivery overnight?
Absolutely.
Okay. So when, so when a call comes in, if you needed something in an overnight situation, then a trained staff member is called in to service that emergency call?
Absolutely.
Okay. But you're not maintaining a first, second, third shift, so you're not operating every single day 24 hours?
Yes, the turnover is always manned from at least 5:00 in the morning till 4:30 by the clock.
Okay. So then if an after-hours call comes in and a staff member has to come in, then you ensure that they are trained to do the work that needs to be done for that particular?
It's a week, most of the time.
Okay, understood, thank you.
All right, well, I've been up down there, there's nobody around, there's trucks being serviced. How do we account for that? Because on his website, he estimates, now this is a businessman here, he estimates he has one to two employees, okay? How do you estimate one to two employees as it always will fail, okay? Now, does his insurance company know that he's running that business with nobody around? Because I can guarantee you, I can take video, I can go up there and start taking video if you want.
The insurance of the company would be outside the scope of our ability to review. What we can review are hours of operations, all right? So we have the ability to review the hours of operations, the trips per day, so our scope is more limited than some of the stuff you're asking. So I'm very sorry that we're not able to address some of the things that you're asking. So we have to look at the application, and they're asking for an additional use to the property, which is allowable, so they have to follow the regulations in regard to that. And then they're asking for hours of operation to match what they currently have. So we continued last month in order to get clarity, because we didn't have the hours of operation that were previously approved. Ryan and the applicant both came forward just to clarify that no hours of operation were indicated, which means they are allowed to operate 24/7. The applicant's indicated he's not open 24/7. And would you say, just for further clarity, that because you schedule your calls, there may be times where you're not physically present, because there's no need to be open for a delivery or a drop-off, is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then as the owner, are you counted as one of the one to two employees that are in a business? Okay. So as owner, you are also an employee, because you're also doing your work?
Yes.
Okay. Is there any self-service feature where a customer could come in and do their own fill-up, or an employee is always present for a customer fill-up?
No, there's a possibility that a person from the do-sold fill-up.
Okay. But that has to be pre-approved and managed by you?
Right.
To determine whether or not they're qualified to fill?
Right. They all have a special kind, and they all go through training before they can fill.
Okay. So the way that it is set up is those drivers who are customers but are qualified to fill have the proper certification?
Absolutely.
And a self-service is scheduled prior by you, so that it's not, any customer can drive up and self-service fill?
Absolutely not, no.
Thank you for that clarity.
Okay, so I want to state it for the record, that he says that he has coverage, okay, and that nobody's up there. Because if something happens, okay, with the way this man runs his business, because I live right across the street and I see it all day long, and I see it all night long, and I've gone up there and people are filling up, dropping off, and there's nobody around, I don't care what he says, there's nobody around, okay? And if you guys don't find out, and something happens, I mean, what's the response? Nobody's there, and there's an accident. What's the delay in the response to get emergency services notified and report there? What will the damage be? Because if something happens, you might as well say goodbye to my house, you might as well say goodbye to my whole entire neighborhood, okay? To allow them to add more than they originally asked for, twice in the face of all the neighbors? And if something happens, and you guys don't put a stop to it, okay, to make him follow the rules, and you add this, allow him to add this propane, you're setting this town and this board up for a lawsuit for failure to act in a hazardous situation. Because it's hazardous to leave a business like this, run with nobody around. Kids can go up there and play, there's nobody there, the gates are open all day, kids can go riding around, hot-riding around, nobody's there. You know, enough is enough. You're supposed to be working for us, not for the almighty dollar for somebody to put their pocket. And I've had enough of her. We were being good neighbors when he asked us to just, for the propane, for just oil tanks for his company, and now look at it. He's selling it to everybody. We've got trucks coming in all day long, and now you want to add more. You want to put our lives in more danger by allowing them to have these tanks. You're forgetting who you worked for, you worked as citizens.
Is there anybody else with a comment or question on the application?
I just have to clarify something. So after reviewing the application from 1998, this was designed as a gas station for large trucks. So this was not...
Hold on, we're not going to get into an argument or debate. This is a public hearing, and is his next comment, so I need you to sit down. Thank you.
I gotta go.
Thank you very much. We have 5000 Road. There is definitely a safety factor there. This is a thing where Phil just said drivers needed to be trained and certified to operate within that facility. It's bulk storage and transfer facility. We're allowing regular consumers with a tractor trailer to go up there, a commercial vehicle with DOT numbers, to operate within a facility that other, the other drivers up there have to have certification, but they don't have to have certifications to be in that same facility? Something does not make sense. I see Sandy Dodge, very nice guy, has different drivers, big one bales the hay out of a flatbed truck. What if that driver's a smoker, and he throws his cigarette out the window, it goes in that hay? He drives up there, he's right alongside the tank that his trained drivers are right there, they're ten feet away from each other, and that thing goes up into flames. There's no controls up there, you cannot let anybody 24/7. The state of Connecticut requires consumer sales to have at least one attendant at all times. Anybody who qualifies, I fueled up up there with tractor trailers, I know what goes on up there. My friend owns a trucking company, I've been up there seven times. All hours of the night, once you've got that car. We don't know if they, if they have an off-road fuel car or a regular, you can't decide they use it. You don't have an attendant there. That is not a lawful practice. And the traffic, since our last meeting, sure, the last 30 days, it reminds me of after 9/11, when President gave the no-fly rule, when you looked up in the sky and you had that eerie feeling? We were like, holy shit, where are all the trucks? They curb the number of trucks that skew the number. We count the trucks, we know how many trucks go up there, these numbers are bogus. Thank you.
I'd just like to remind the commissioner, though, we are not here tonight to exist in operation.
Correct.
Just for the additional...
Understood.
Okay. Billy LePain, 383 Norwich Road. I just want to clarify a point he made, that the original application was for a gas station. It wasn't, because he was asked point-blank at that meeting, what, that if it was going to be just for the oil tanks, it was not going to be selling gas or any type of gas, or any type of selling of things. Said point-blank, no, in the meeting. And I called him a liar at the next meeting, because next thing you know, we got some selling gas.
Okay. So we can't, hold on.
There's not cash selling?
This current operation that's already in progress has been approved, and there's no change to current operation. What we are talking about is the addition of the propane. So we have to stay limited to what we can affect this evening, which is whether to approve, deny, or modify what they're proposing as an additional use. We cannot change what is already done. If there are complaints about them violating a state DOT rule, then that complaint would need to be filed with the state DOT. And then if it was found that state DOT had an issue with what they were doing, that's state DOT's jurisdiction. It's outside the scope of what we're able to do. Tonight, we are talking about the additional traffic, the hours of operation of their new proposed use. We can't rehash what happened in 1998, because it's already been approved and in operation, they have past precedents and business operation. So we need to come back to where we are now.
I understand that.
Thank you.
I was just clarifying his point.
Sure.
That the man was a liar then, he was a liar now.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or questions from the public on this application? Any comments or questions from board members? All right, hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
Make a motion to close. Second by...
Motion to close by Lindsey, second by June, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yeah.
Opposed? Okay. Were you at the end or not opposed? On closing the public hearing?
Oh, yes.
Okay. So just let the record know that it's a three to one to closing the public hearing. So the public hearing is closed. Moving on to item D 23-17 SP of Joel Panalekis requesting a special permit to create an accessory dwelling within an attached garage on property located at 679 Squaw Rock Road, assessors map 28, block 124A, lot 8A, RA 60 zoning district.
Phil Bailey is over. I just wanted you, a two-car garage and two-way garage, just for the bathroom, the kitchen, stairs go upstairs, that's about it.
Okay. And in your packet is the floor plan of that?
Mm-hmm. I got the bottom floor and the top floor.
Okay. Thank you.
Top floors are 100% finished, so literally, I'm not going to...
Ryan, any comments on this application?
No, it's pretty straightforward. So the bottom floor is, let me just read through this for a second. So the first floor is 505 square feet, the second floor is 250 square feet, for a total of 755 square feet. It's a large house at 2,322 square feet, so it's well within our standards.
Okay. Any comments or questions from the public regarding this application? Any comments or questions from board members? Okay, hearing and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion on the public hearing.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
I have a motion to close by John.
Second.
Second by June, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Public hearing is closed. Moving on to the regular meeting, I'll call it to order. We did have additions, corrections to the agenda. Under new business, item D 23-11ZC, and item E 23-10TA, I would also like to add other discussion of special permit regulations. So do I have a motion to add that to the agenda? All right, I have a motion by John.
Second.
Second by Lindsey, all in favor of adding item D, E to new business, and discussion of special permit regs under other? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, added to the agenda. Citizen participation, this is the opportunity for the public to address the board on something that was not a public hearing.
I'm Art Gagnon, something that was brought up in the public hearing made me think rude road property excavation there has been changed to industrial. Does this mean that they can come back for 24-hour, seven-day-a-week operation because they're industrial for their excavation?
It could always imply, it's not guaranteed they're going to get...
And it would still go through a special permit process?
Yes.
Because all operations follow your special permit regulations?
Yes, if they'd like to modify the hours, it has to go back through a special permit process.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. All right, moving on to the unfinished old business. Item A 23-15SP of commercials, Strategic Commercial Realty, Inc., requesting special permit for earth excavation on properties located at 0 Norwich Road, assessors maps 10, block 4, lots 36, 37, 38, map 10, block 4A, lot 13. Any items for discussion on this application? So the applicant had come in and made the modifications requested to hours of operation to the buffering, also came back with the clarification for the emergency access, the traffic assessment, and the revision of the hours of operation. So are there any other items to discuss on this application?
I see there's everything on this.
All right. So staff did suggest, when making a motion regarding this application, if there is a motion to approve recommending the following, a restoration bond of 124,000 to be submitted to the zoning office prior to receiving a zoning permit, the mileage to be recorded prior to receiving a zoning permit, no more than two phases are to be opened at one time with an asphalt of each phase required within 90 days of restoration. And I would add item four regarding the additional burn as indicated during the public hearing.
And just for clarity, the burn is to be continued along the East Lee Line against the railroad in Area A5.
Thank you for the specificity, Ryan. All right, so if there's no other discussion, I'll entertain a motion, and if you want to include the four conditions of approval.
I'm making a motion to approve with the four conditions of approval.
Okay, I have a motion by Lindsey to approve with those conditions as read. Do I have a second? I have a second by John. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
I oppose.
All right, so we'll show that that's a three to one decision. So the application's approved with the conditions as read. Item 23-1ZS of Towne Plainfield requesting a zoning regulation text amendment to delete section 12.21 municipal uses and add new section 15.9 municipal uses. Any items of discussion for this regulation? So I would... So I would just bring up that when it comes to town property, the owner of the town property are the people. And I do have concerns about some of the items that bypass the special permit process because it gives no opportunity for the public to have input on that. There are certainly some things I think we all agree, a park bench doesn't necessarily need to go through that extended process because it's not significantly changing the town property, where the townspeople might object to that modification or change of the property. So that's a concern. And even with the accessory structures not to exceed nine hundred square feet of footprint or two stories, once again, when a resident comes forward with an application, they are the owner of the property, so they're bringing forward that application. But if we allow those structures to go through as a right with a zoning permit, there's no notification to a butters, there's no public hearing, which means there's no public notification required, and there's no opportunity for the public to give input on those structures. So I have a concern of it being as a right because the zoning permit just goes through the zoning office, it would not come before the commission. So those are concerns that I have. Ryan, when it comes to the signage, they would have to meet all requirements of the sign requirements in the zone, right? Does that need to be referenced or referred back to in any of the sections of the new regulations, or would that be an automatic default?
It'd be an automatic default. I believe it's per the commercial zone. Yeah, adhered to the commercial signage regulations. So that'd be up to ten foot tall, fifty square feet, just like any commercial, commercial use, fifty square foot on a building.
I think we all know one of the same thing. I think we all still want a public hearing. I think that's the part that bothers me the most is that it's town money, it's people's money. So, I mean, I don't want us to be needlessly paying for, I mean, surveys or things that are a little bit over the top, that maybe could be adjusted. But I think the public hearing part is the part that bothers me the most. You might have to really get down to it. I want the people to be able to say yes or no, or at least say what they feel when it comes to town projects. So is there a way to separate that? Is there a way to, I don't even know if right now is the appropriate time to ask that question, but I don't want us, I don't want our tax money to pay for surveys we don't need at all.
Sure.
Does a special permit have to mean you get this ridiculous survey? Like, why can't we just have a public hearing and maybe get rid of some of the surveys?
So I think, so special permit regulations, and you'll notice the item I added to the end of the agenda. Special permit regulations are written generally to impact all special permit regulations, right? So every special permit has to meet those specific regulations.
In a residential zone, we typically waive, well, not waive, but we don't require a full site plan for most projects.
Okay.
If somebody were to put up a twelve hundred square foot garage, we typically just use an air photo for that. We don't require a survey.
Yeah, could we, I mean, could we do that for the town? I don't think why the town would be different.
It is written in here that the commission can waive the formal technical requirements.
Okay, so can we separate the public hearing from that? So can we say somewhere in here, we still should have a public hearing?
So, yeah.
For any, should it be a dollar amount rather than a size of something? Right? Like if the town wants to spend two hundred, five hundred bucks to repolish a bench, I don't think anyone really needs to have a public hearing about it.
Right.
But if they're going to spend ten thousand bucks or more, you know, doing something on, repurposing a playground, even though it doesn't change the square footage, some people might want to have a say in it or say something about it.
Also keep in mind that we do have the cost of a butter notification.
That's true.
But I think that's an essential part of the process. Because notifying the public about public projects, I really truly feel is an essential part of the process. So when I look at what the proposed regulations are, so it says exemptions, permit not required, park benches, informational signs, landscaping, commemorative signs, plaques, monuments, which need further definition as pointed out during the public hearing, and similar uses. So I would caution about, you know, similar uses, how we manage that part of it. But in general, I think the idea is right that those things are small, non-substantial, not greatly changing the character of a town property. Replacement or addition of playground and recreation, provided perimeter of playground recreation area is not expanded. So once again, it's not changing the character of the town property. I doubt townspeople would be concerned if we update, upgrade, or change that. So I think that's a reasonable, reasonable exemption. The walking trails, provided they're not located within a hundred feet of a residential block. Once again, reasonable. Municipal uses within a town or state right of way. So essentially, that's within a certain number of feet of like town easements and roadways.
So, yes, typically that's within a roadway.
Mm-hmm. So I think in general, we can probably agree on those exemptions. Where I get a little stuck, and I think Lindsey's on the same page that I'm, is that as of right with zoning permit, because with the zoning permit process, there is no notification to the public and there's no opportunity for public comment. Am I right, Ryan?
Right.
Because that's done exclusively through the zoning office. So that would be, the town goes to you, and then those things listed under that section would happen with no public notification required and no ability for public to comment on the uses. So I think that's where I get a little hung up, because I think cutting the public out of the process is not a good idea because a structure would be substantially changing a town property. If you have a town green and then you construct an eighteen hundred square foot structure on there, that's substantially changing, and I think people should have opportunity to be notified and to have comment.
Well, eighteen hundred square feet would require a special permit under this.
Well, this is saying not to exceed nine hundred square foot of footprint or two stories. So if it's nine hundred square foot footprint and it's two story. Now, Ryan, when it comes to, because we did close the public hearing, we can still make modifications as long as it's not a substantial change that would, there's a particular phrase. Is it substantial change, is the phrase?
Right.
So if we were restricting, that would be allowable, but if we were expanding, we would have to reopen the public hearing, is that right?
Generally, yes.
Okay, all right. And advertising signs, as it is now, that's approved by, that doesn't come before us because it's all through regulation. So that one seems fine with me. Change of use or new use within an existing structure, once again, it's not substantially changing the character of the property, so I think that is fine. What I would suggest is moving item one, accessory structures and additions to structures under special permit process, so that the public notification and public input is assured. And then within that, I know it says commission reserves the right to waive a formal site plan, so that would be the clause where the commission has the ability to determine whether full engineering is required. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. Now, in order for the commission to make that determination, with the planned development district, we have a precomp, not, a pre-applica, not a pre-application.
Pre-application.
Pre-application process, so a pre-application process. So in essence, before applying, if the town wanted to see if the commission was amenable to waiving that part of the site plan, then they should come in before applying, right? Because then, at the special permit, then we would kind of have predetermined whether engineering would be required or not. So would we be able to add that pre-application process to make the determination of whether the formal site plan should be waived or not? So it could mirror the planned development district.
I think it's kind of self-explanatory. The town can roll the dice, send an application, and say this is too extensive and it needs a formal site plan. They would withdraw it and resubmit once they have the formal site plan. If the town knows ahead of time that they're planning on doing something, then they, you know, for selectmen or staff would say, this is what we're doing, here's the idea, what do you think? And we can go from there. So I don't think there's a necessity for a formal pre-application meeting.
Okay. So in essence, when the town comes forward with an application, it would go through our normal process, we would schedule a public hearing, then at the public hearing, we would determine whether engineering was required or not. And because it's a town application, you know, timelines can be extended, so if engineering was required, there'd be additional timelines?
No.
Okay.
The commission application, there, it's open-ended as far as timelines go. The town would be an applicant, so you do have to provide other timelines.
Okay.
But if they have to get a survey form, they'll just withdraw the application.
And resubmit later? Because there's no fee or penalty applied to town applications? All right.
I think, you know, if we wanted to take in three places, evos out there, I don't think it required a survey of that. You know, just an aerial photo showing where the evos was going. So I, I think it's kind of self-explanatory what would require a full survey of what would it.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, I like, what are you proposing?
Okay. So just looking at, summarizing my suggestion, item A, looks good. Item B, looks good. We do have to further define monuments. So Ryan, would it be prudent to continue this to next month to get that clarification of monuments?
I think it might be something that would work out after the fact. You know, it's pretty simple. I know you want the five foot tall, five foot wide, five foot deep.
Yep.
And just come up with a standard definition of a monument, and if the commission is happy with it, it'll just incorporate it. I think you can approve it tonight with that commission.
Okay. And then, so the rest of that looked fine. I would, I would propose that accessory structures and additions be under special permit, so that they would not be by zoning permit. So I would strike item one from the as-of right and then edit the uses permitted by special permit with site plan approval to say accessory structures and additions. So size, any size accessory structure or addition would go through the special permit process so we can ensure public notification and public input.
And also my recommendation to add municipal uses to every district.
Okay, yes, I did see that, that addition as well. Did anyone else have any additional points of clarification or revisions that they wanted to see to these regulations?
You struck buildings from each one?
No, so what I did was under item C subsection one, where it says accessory structures and additions that would be by as-of right, I am moving that to item D so that all accessory structures and additions fall under the special permit process so that we can ensure public notification and public input.
Okay.
Yeah, because if we leave it in that as-of right, then there is no public notification or input, and I feel that's important. So any other items of discussion or clarification? All right, so I'll make the motion to approve the regulations with the revisions notified contingent upon the further clarification definition of monuments. Given that, Ryan, would that then, effective date have to be delayed until monuments is clarified?
No, I think we'll have it at one point in time.
Okay, so I'll also add the effective date of November first to my motion.
I have a second.
I have a second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The revised regulations are approved with an effective date of November first. Thank you. All right, item C twenty-three dash eight S P L of John Cruz requesting site plan approval for improvements to existing commercial automotive in addition to the building at fourteen eleven Norwich Road, assessors map five, block one, lot two, C one zoning district. Do we have anyone speaking for the applicant?
This has been withdrawn.
Okay, withdrawn. Thank you. Item D twenty-three dash one six S P of Route Twelve Bulk LLC requesting special permit for bulk propane storage and distribution on property located at three eighty-eight Norwich Road, assessors map sixteen, block fifty-six, lot twenty-four, C one zoning district. Items for discussion on this application? So I understand the original use was approved for twenty-four, twenty-four seven. Well, it didn't state hours of operation, but once again, when we look at applications, I don't think we've had anything with unrestricted hours of operation. So I would definitely want to see a limitation on the hours of operation for the additional So whether that is a Monday to Friday, seven AM to seven PM, with, with Saturday, eight to noon, I am not looking favorably on allowing an additional use at a twenty-four seven.
I'm not either.
Is this a, what's the zoning? I mean, residential, industrial?
So it's rent on Route Twelve, so it is a commercial business, it's approved for commercial. There are residents surrounding the property, but it's already established operation since nineteen ninety-eight of a twenty-four, twenty-four hour, seven days a week.
And this would, just, I might want to.
A public hearing? A clarification question, Ryan, outside the public hearing?
We might know the answer. We might know the answer. I didn't write it down, I thought I did, but it was only going to add with the propane four eight more trucks?
Yes.
Is that what it was?
So we said approximately three tractor-trails for deliveries.
Yep.
That's filling up propane tanks per week, and then the rest are the propane trucks, which are about the size of a truck.
So four, but every day?
So three tractor-trails per week to fill up.
Yep.
And then, I don't know exactly how many they're expecting per day, I think it depends on the number of customers.
Right, right.
But they'd be filling up the propane fueling trucks at, at board houses for deliveries.
So even if we added hours of operation to the propane, because of the grandfather rules, the oil's still going to continue twenty-four hours.
Correct. It's not going to impact the already operating business since nineteen ninety-eight, this would just be for the additional use.
Now, the bulk, I mean, they're just storing basically diesel fuel and propane in a lot, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Correct, yep.
Now, my concern with propane is, if you have a liter of propane, it's a lot more serious than it is with.
Actually, it's a lot.
Well, it depends, it depends, because then neither one's good, but you have to, if you're assuming that propane's just going to dissipate, if it doesn't, it's a lot more flammable. Yes, and the thing that I was hearing is that it's questionable to, at least from what I've heard, is there always somebody up there who is, you know, qualified to operate propane family? Now, if I knew somebody was going to be there all the time, I'd feel more comfortable with that. You have a spilling of diesel fuel, it's kind of hard to light a fire. It happens, but propane is, it's, is usually, when it's released, it's bit chills, and it can only brown, if you move down the delta. I mean, diesel fuel's going to do the same thing, but it's not going to be flammable.
So one thing I was just thinking of, unfortunately, the public hearing's closed, but, you know, these are delivery drivers that are going to fill up the propane. They're not somebody going to fill up by gallon tank. They have to be trained in hazmat and, you know, fueling their trucks. So I don't know if they're going to have somebody on site operating the propane tanks or if it's going to be drivers, but everybody will be trained, it's not, it's not your average person going up there and trying to operate it.
That's on this application.
I make a motion to approve.
I have a motion to approve by Lindsey.
A motion to approve.
A second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Application is approved. Item F, 23-9 SPL of Thanosaurus Constantinus Aristodon, requesting approval to perform drainage improvements within the parking lot of 780, 788 Norwich Road, assessors map 17, lot 13A, lot one, C2 zoning district. And we have presenting for the applicant?
Relieving for the record, great laws with Hillingley Engineering Associates, lease of business at 114 West Scott Road. And I do have maps for you right here. Brian, missing on the map, can you just call this down and close it? Okay, so this is a property located in the same plaza, kind of just south of where McDonald's is, over the intersection of Lake of Road and Norwich Road 12. Presently, it's a plaza, packaged store and restaurant in it. Currently, there's a, this is more of a repair to the drainage system there. When it rains, there's only one catch basin on the side meter that will dry well under it. And when the rains come, there is puddling in the significant area of the parking, all the way up to the concrete sidewalk, that sometimes lasts for a period of 24 hours after that rain event. So they reached out to us, and Norman Tebow, our engineer, put together a design to create a drainage system that would tie in, it would be a subsurface drainage system, using treatment, there would be storm tech chambers rated for H20 welding. What we would do is we would tie into that catch basin. These are approximately five rows at 75, five rows at 75 feet long, and we would be provided. If you look at it, one of the rows is crosshatched. That would be an isolator or a treatment portion. That would, that treatment would take the first flush of the rain and treat beforehand. It also has filter fabric around it that would catch fines and sediments that would come in during it. There's a manifold system that ended with a weird type of device that when the water flows in, once that first trench is filled up, after that first infiltration, then it would start going to clean waters and start going to the other trenches. He didn't provide drainage reports. We didn't size this for a 50-year storm. If there's a 50-year storm with this in place, there will be no puddling on the driveway. If there were a 100-year type of storm there, there would only be a slight amount of puddling, and that puddling would dissipate and seep into the ground in less than one hour. So it's a greatly improvement, it's a needed improvement if you've been by there or seen it after a rain event. Again, all of the drainage calculations were supported or were submitted as part of the application. And I believe Ryan's had a chance to review those. During construction, obviously, it would be the contractor's responsibility, be it off the area, with temporary gaming. And probably, we anticipate it would be approximately a two-day project to put these in, to get them on-site. So again, we're just bringing this before you. If you have any questions, I kind of went over it very quickly. These are 36-inch-high type units. They'll be approximately four feet into the ground. So it'll be about four to cover over them. Again, and they are made for the H20 welding, so they can be a part of the lot. I'll turn it over to the commission for any questions.
Ryan, was this, because it's a drainage situation, was this sent to town engineer for review?
We do not currently have an engineer.
When did that happen?
Weeks ago.
Okay. I would want to see drainage reviewed by a town engineer. Understood, you have your own engineer, but for town, review, independent review, so that we can have all the information.
I mean, are you sending things out for the second-party review or anything like that, Ryan? Would you be open to that, if that's-
We do not have an engineer.
So I think it's important that the commission have access to those experts that are necessary for us to have full information and independent review to ensure.
So just for clarity, this is an improvement to existing site?
And I understand that. But we've had, I remember when McDonald's came through, and there was concerns about directional flow and drainage counts. So I would not want to move forward without having the independent review so that we can have the information. We need to make the best decision, not based on what the applicant's presenting, but our own independent advisor. Mr. Cunningham, since I see you in the audience. Connecticut general statutes require that we have access to expertise. So my question is, do we have a consultant on file that we can send this application to?
We're in the process of getting an engineer as you speak.
Okay. So I would say at this time, I would not be comfortable moving forward until we have that review. So I would want to continue this to next month. What is the timeline to get that person retained?
Still looking to interview.
Okay. So I would make a motion to continue to our next regularly scheduled meeting so we have time to send that off. Okay. I have a motion by June to continue. I have a second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We will see you next month, and hopefully with that review completed.
All right. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Thank you, very much appreciated. Moving on to new business. Item A, 23-9 ZC of Moira Van Deek, requesting a zone change from RA60 to commercial. This would require a public hearing. So I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by June and a second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, scheduled to public hearing. Item B, 23-18 SP of Town Plainfield, requesting special permit. This also requires a public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing.
To our regularly scheduled meeting in November?
Yes.
Okay, regularly scheduled meeting in November. I have a second by Lindsay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Scheduled for public hearing. Item C, 23-9 TA of the Planning and Zoning Commission, requesting a text amendment to zoning regulations. Text amendments require public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
To our regularly scheduled meeting?
To our regularly scheduled meeting.
November meeting. Motion by June and a second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing is scheduled for November. Item D, 23-11 ZC of Ryan McCann, requesting a change of zone from RA60 to Industrial 1. This also requires public hearing. I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing to our regularly scheduled meeting in November.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion by June. And a second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right. Item E, 23-10 TA of the Planning and Zoning Commission, removal of the 12-month moratorium from application 23-3 ZC of Town of Plainfield. This can be acted on tonight. Is that right, Ryan? Or does that need a public hearing for the moratorium?
It needs public hearing.
It needs a public hearing? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to schedule a public hearing to our regularly scheduled meeting in November.
I'll make a motion to schedule that.
All right. Motion by John. Second by June. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Public hearing scheduled, regular meeting November. Looking at the minutes from the September 12th meeting, was there any-
There's a couple of spelling errors.
Oh, okay.
Naomi, N-A-O-M-I. And Chris Carrick has two Ts in C-A-R-O-T-Z.
Okay.
That sounds like soft.
All right. Eagle eye. Thank you. All right. Any other amendments or changes to the minutes? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to accept the minutes with those revisions.
I'll make that motion. I'll second it.
I have a motion by June and a second by John. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? What was that?
We just didn't hear something. I just want to make sure that that's okay.
Yeah, absolutely.
All right. So you have new business, is that a motion to a public hearing?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Regular November meeting.
Thank you.
Correct. Yep. All right. So minutes are approved with that change. Moving on to correspondence.
No correspondence.
No correspondence. Moving on to report from zoning enforcement.
I have provided my report to you, and you can review that if you don't, if you're scared.
Okay. How many cases are still going through the court, Ryan?
I think two.
Two? Okay. Should we have an executive session at the next meeting? Are there updates or pending court follow-up that we need to discuss an executive session? Or will there be no updates at that time?
I'd have to check to see what the next court date is.
Okay.
If there's a court date, we'll put up or-
Perfect. All right. So if there's a court date between now and the next meeting, we'll have executive session so we can discuss what happened at court. Perfect. Thank you. All right. Report from Planning and Development. That was a written report. Was there anything added to that, Ryan, that you were aware of?
No, there was none, just what you received.
Okay, great. So the item I added under "other," the discussion of the special permit, that's specifically related to the gravel operations. Because when you look at the special permit regulations for gravel operations, I don't think they've been reviewed or revised in many, many years. So what I would like the commission to consider is putting a moratorium on new gravel operations in order for us to review those regulations. And I think that would be a prudent and due diligence task of the commission, considering, you know, an inventory of operations, that kind of thing. So Ryan, from a procedure perspective, we would be the applicant proposing a moratorium on new gravel operations. So it would just be new. It wouldn't impact anything already in operation. So step one would be to apply for the moratorium, go through the special permit process. Then if a moratorium is put into place at the close of those public hearing process, then there would be a pause on all new operations. That would give us opportunity to review those regulations and make any additional changes that are deemed appropriate, given the case. Also with that, do we have a current inventory of gravel operations in town? Non-conforming, active, inactive?
We don't have one for non-conforming, but we do have one for all the active that are permanent.
Okay. We would have to have non-conforming, right? Because we'd have to know that they were grandfathered.
Oh, there is, there are files on them. I'd have to look through the files.
Okay. So the moratorium would also give us that opportunity to do like a full inventory of all operations, whether they were grandfathered, non-conforming, active, inactive, just anything that had been approved. Okay. Did you have a question here?
No, I was thinking about the inactive.
Yeah. Okay.
Just thoughts, just thinking.
Okay. You did look deep in thought, and I appreciate that. All right. So- Yes?
Would this include new or expanded, which I mean by expanded beyond the original? I mean, would you consider that new? I mean, see, like, it might be.
I would think that it was more important to be for renewals as well.